Welcome to the October 13, 2009 education meeting. Will you all please rise and join us in our pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on every ground and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Members present this evening, Mrs. Iacano, Mr. Weber, Mrs. Kupchak, Mr. Lutola, Mrs. Alvin, Mrs. Zahn, Mrs. Dotson was called back to work and will not be here, Mrs. Dow and Mrs. Brand, and the secretary will report the members of the administration. Thank you. And our first item is we have introduction and recognition of PTA Board of Education Representatives, Dr. Clark.
Thank you. This is an opportunity for the members of the Board of Education to meet those of you who attend regularly, report back to the PTA groups who represent about everything that's been going on during the meeting. I know that the members who represent PTA Council are taking very extensive notes and reporting the information to PTA Council. What we would like to do is ask you to line up at the microphone, please introduce yourself to the Board of Education and let us know which school you represent so Board members can put a place to remain and so that we can say thank you, we will appreciate this. So if you would like to line up, the PTA Board of Education reps, and introduce yourselves, we will appreciate it. Thank you.
I am Laura M. Pucci. I used to be representative at Riverfield and now I'm at Karachlebo High School.
I'm Trulie Darrell. I am the PTA, one of the PTA representatives for Holland Hill School.
Hi, good evening. Peter Rupert, Strathfield School.
Hi, Jeff Petersen, also Strathfield School.
I'm Nicole Stan, of Fairfield.
John Conventino, Shippensburg.
Lisa Havy, PTA Council.
Hi, I'm Lisa Amendola from Brea Elementary. There are two of us.
Hi, Beth Pogan from Bell Hill and Thompson.
Hi, Duffy Kilbride from Riverfield.
Hi, Mark Newman from SEPTA.
Hi, I'm Robin Oris from Osborne Hill.
Hello, Mike Hoffman from Osborne Hill.
Good evening, Jennifer Stahl Dwight.
Hi, David Cullen, North Strathfield and Fairfield Woods.
Thank you so much, everybody. Would you please join me in saying thank you to the members of the Board?
On behalf of the Board, thank you to everyone for the work that you do to keep your schools informed and also the information that you bring back to us. Thank you. Our next item of business is the introduction of the superintendent search consultants that the Board of Education is hiring and will be working with for the search. And we have retained the services of the consulting firm of Hazard Young and Atia Associates and the two members from their firm who will come forward and introduce themselves. We have Debbie Rasis and John Chambers. And they will speak for a moment and over what they have done so far with us and outline a little bit of what the work will be in the coming weeks for the community forums and the focus groups that will be held so that we can develop the leadership profile which the Board will work from. I turn it over to Mr. Chambers and Mrs. Rasis.
Thank you, Mrs. Alvin, members of the Board, members of the community and staff. It's a delight for us to be here tonight. We're very pleased that Hazard Young and Atia has been chosen by the Board to assist in your selection. I'll describe Hazard Young and Atia a little bit and then Debbie will talk a bit about the process that we will try to use to help the Board with the selection of your next superintendent. Hazard Young and Atia is a nationally-based firm. It's been in the business of helping school boards select superintendents for more than 20 years. Currently has about 110 associates nationwide. Debbie and I are two, obviously, in the local area. The firm tries very hard to find people with some local connections to assist boards. We happen to have a combination that we think is felicitous. I'm a former superintendent, serving in two New York districts for 17 years. Debbie is a former school board president in our Westchester district and also happens to be the chair of the Board of Trustees in a college in the Boston area. The process for the firm does include a national search and we will reach out, not least of all, through our associates around the country to find the very best candidates for the job. We do, however, anticipate that many of those good candidates will come from the tri-state area, from New England. It's our job in part to encourage the best candidates to apply who would be a good match for Fairfield. We think that this is an attractive job. We think there will be candidates out there of the quality that you will want to see. Although we want to take care to note that the climate now in superintendent searches is not what it was 10 years or 15 years ago. And Dr. Clark was your successful candidate some time ago. There are many more candidates available than are available now. There's a set of demographic reasons for that, but in effect, the pools of candidates even in outstanding districts like Fairfield are not as numerous as they once were. Therefore, it's incumbent on us to help the Board find high-quality candidates. Ultimately, you will only name one person as your new superintendent. We expect to cull the initial field of candidates to a manageable number who will come to the Board as semifinalists. I commend you and we appreciate the advantage that you have provided to us in setting up an ideal timeline for the search. With Dr. Clark's announcement of her expected retirement, you have plenty of time to conduct this nationwide search, be able to name your new superintendent in time for a very good transition. Debbie, I'd like to describe a couple of the early steps in the process, not least of all those involving members of the community.
In order to really talk about, in order to be able to recruit the kind of people that you want, we really need to learn about the community. And that's an essential part of the search process. And in order to do that, we look forward to spending two full days in the district on November 9th and November 10th. Meetings during the day and into the evening. John and I will each meet with various groups that have been assigned to us by the school board. And we look forward to finding out what the strengths of the district are, what the issues are facing the district, and the characteristics of the people we're looking for in the next superintendent. Also on those days, on November 9th, we will hold two community forums to which everyone in the community is invited and we hope we'll get a great turnout. One will be in the morning because those two will be found, that time more convenient, 9:30 in the morning on November 9th. And the second one will be at night and that will be on November 9th at 7:00 PM. Again, that will be widely publicized so people will know about them. At the same time, we also have a leadership profile assessment form which will be put up on your website, will be left at the schools, will, there'll be hopefully plenty of opportunity for people to get ahold of the form either through electronically or in a hard copy. And again, that form asks the same questions, what do you consider to be the two or three most significant strengths of the district? What do you see as the two or three most significant important challenges facing the district? And please share two or three characteristics that you're looking for in the next superintendent. We take all of this information, we put it together into, we look at, we read every single forum, we go through all of our notes, and then we put that into a profile report which we will present to the Board in public meeting on December 8th. We take those characteristics and the essence of the community that we have gotten from all of our meetings with everybody on the 9th and 10th, which is so very important in order for us to understand what this district is like, excuse me, is life. And then we will take that and do the best job we possibly can to recruit the best possible candidates for Fairfield. And we look forward to that opportunity.
Thank you very much. I wanted to thank you for coming this evening and giving us an opportunity to introduce you to the public. And on the 9th and the 10th, both Mr. Chambers and Debbie Rasis will be in the district all day, those two days and the evening. And the focus groups and the community forums will be well-publicized. We will get that information out as soon as the schedule is set. We hope to have that perhaps worked out as early as late this week or early next week. And we will post all of that up on our website so that members of the public will have the information. And we'll also see what we can do with the local newspapers to see that it's widely publicized for everyone to know. So I thank you again for coming this evening and we all on the Board look forward to working with you. And as we often say to people who don't need to stay for the whole meeting, you are welcome to go home if you're going. Or you can stay and listen to us work, but you're certainly welcome to leave at this time. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to help with the search. We thank the Board and the superintendent for giving us a district with a great track record that can make our job easier. We'll go home now and start calling potential candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next item of business, I have a recommended motion that the Board of Education approve
the minutes of the special meeting of September 14, 2009, and the business meeting of September 22, 2009. Enclosures 1 and 2 moved by. Mrs. Dow seconded by Mrs. Iacano. Any comments from members of the Board on the minutes? All in favor of the motion? Opposed? Abstaining? The item passes with Mrs. Iacano, Mr. Weber, Mr. Lutola, Mrs. Alvin, Mrs. Zahn, Mrs. Dow, and Mrs. Brand voting in favor. No abstentions and Mrs. Kupchak, no opposition, and Mrs. Kupchak abstaining. And moving on, we have public comments and petition. And during this period, during this period, the Board meets, the Board will hear comments and receive petitions from any citizen present at the meeting. Any single presentation must be limited to two minutes and audiovisual equipment and also without the advance authorization of the chairman. The Board will not hear comment on individual personnel matters or comments addressed to a specific member or members of the Board. The quorum will be enforced and citizens are asked to comment on any voting item at the time the item is under consideration. Are there any members of the public wishing to address the Board at this time? If so, please come forward stating your name and address for the record.
David Cullen, Westfield Road. And good evening, I'm here as a, tonight as a member of the representative town meeting for District 7. And within the district, several parents with children attending several different Fairfield schools have expressed to me that they feel many parents as well as themselves believe much more can and should be done to ensure more children are washing their hands to help cut down on the potential transmission of the H1N1 virus at school. These individuals believe very strongly there should be a uniform handwashing policy drawn up by the superintendent's office and that it should be implemented by the principal at each school. At the very least, this policy should state that all children must be reminded to wash their hands before snack breaks and before lunch, and perhaps most importantly, that they be provided the time to do so. By contrast, is the view of these parents that the current necessary emphasis on handwashing is happening in a scattershot fashion. It is done well in some classes and not at all in others according to what I was told. It was also pointed out to me that while the Scrummy Bear program in place for K-2 students, as well as the placement of sanitizer dispensers in handy locations in the schools are very positive steps, to not remind children to wash or sanitize their hands and or not give them the time to do so is very counterproductive. That in effect wastes taxpayers' money expended on those programs and does nothing to protect our children from what is viewed by many experts as a potentially dangerous epidemic this flu season. Thank you very much for your kind consideration of this request.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to address the Board? Seeing none, we will move on to our next item. And we have presentations. We have an update on the Scientific Research Based Intervention, SRBI. I'll turn that over to Dr. Clark.
Thank you. While Dr. Rosado is getting ready for this, we thought it would be really important for Board members to have a presentation. You've heard about RTI, you've heard about SRBI. We think it's important that you have an understanding of what this looks like as the implement is in the schools. And unfortunately, Mr. Lutola, Mrs. Alvin, Mrs. Zahn and I are going to move so you can see the presentation.
And we are pleased to have this opportunity to update you on what has become known as SRBI, which as you can see stands for Scientifically Research-Based Interventions. You may also know this as RTI, Response to Intervention. They're essentially interchangeable acronyms. And also for your information, this presentation will be given again tomorrow evening at the Parent Forum that has been called by the SEPTA, Special Education PTA, tomorrow evening, 7 o'clock at McKinley School. And that will be a parent and community forum on this topic and all are certainly welcome to attend that as well if you'd like to hear it again. The teaching has been called both an art and a science and you need both sides of that equation to do the job well. And I would say that all of us feel that this initiative will really add a lot to the science side of that equation. It's going to certainly help us as we, you know, as we work to make sure that all students are successful. And before we begin the presentation, I just want to talk a little bit about what SRB is not and sort of set the stage for that. SRB is not a program. It's not a package or a product that you buy. It's not something new. In fact, it embodies a lot of very positive and best practices that we in education have been using for many years. It's also not one size fits all. We're going to walk through the components this evening, but it really is focused on individual success of students. And it's also not something just for students who are struggling in their academic progress. It's a, it's an approach really that will benefit all children. SRBI really is a way of organizing, a way of thinking about a comprehensive educational system. And the way that we like to think about that is in three tiers, which we're going to walk through in a few minutes. As you walk up the different tiers, you enter greater levels of intervention as students need more assistance. It's very important to note that a good SRBI system builds on a solid general education curriculum. It really is about all kids in all classes and ensuring that you've got a solid curriculum in place as well as supports when needed along the way. It's a model that's focused on integrating instruction and assessment for all students. And by that I mean both vertical alignment of curriculum going up as well as horizontally across a grade level, say across a district of, you know, the size of Fairfield, across, say, 11 elementary schools. So it's an integrated approach with instruction and assessment and that really allows a lot more power to speak to the data that you're going to be collecting. It does require ongoing collection of student performance data and that drives instructional decisions. Again, I mentioned earlier that this adds a lot to the science side of the equation. This is where we find this, really focusing our discussions with teachers and as administrators around student performance data over time and making decisions based on that. It does provide a system for screening students, preventing learning issues, and also early intervention when we see that benchmarks are not being assessed, or not being obtained, rather, to put interventions into place as early as possible. Certainly, ongoing parent communication is enhanced through this because as the levels of intervention become more involved, parents certainly do need to be not only involved in working with their children, but they also need to know how the progress is going and what they can do and how they can assist the school in making sure that students are making adequate progress. And it focuses on best practices for teaching and learning. So when teachers are coming together, looking at student data, really you're focusing on what is, what will work best and you're really tapping into the expertise of all of the colleagues around the table. There are five core, core features of a good SRBI system. The first, as I said earlier, is high-quality classroom instruction. All starts in the general ed classroom. So that needs to be in place right off the bat. Another component, which is a relatively new term I would say to us, is universal screening. And this means taking, taking stock of where all students are three times a year. That's not a hard and fast rule, but that's typically what we're shooting for, three times a year across all grade levels to monitor growth and progress. So we want to be taking a look at, for example, all second graders in reading, at the beginning, at the middle, and at the end, using the same standardized measure and then having, looking at individual students up against our benchmark, see how we're progressing and watching those trend lines improve. Progress monitoring, classroom progress, performance, rather, is monitored using various curriculum-based assessments. This happens typically and most of the time within the classroom itself. And these are, these can be very quick assessments that teachers do with students that can be done individually, they can be done in small groups, to get a quick understanding of how the kids are doing in terms of the skills that are being taught at that moment. Research-based interventions. When that students are not making progress, or a particular student is not making progress, you want to put in place an intervention that has good research behind it, that is focused and targeted, and that has been proven to be successful. And then along with that, you want to determine how is that student responding to that intervention, not waiting a few months down the line, but relatively regularly going in and assessing how is this intervention working, calling a team of specialists together to say, let's take a look at the data of this intervention. And then fidelity measures, this is very important. Really need to be sure from a district level, and this certainly falls into my arena as well as the administrators at the school, to ensure that the curriculum, number one, and the interventions that we put in place for students are implemented as they're intended to be implemented and with consistency. We certainly know that there is room across, say, 11 elementaries, three middles, and two high schools for inconsistency, but we need to be working against that to be sure that curriculum is put in place and is implemented with fidelity. Okay, I apologize, this is kind of hard to read, but I have put a PowerPoint into place. It may be, maybe just as hard to read on that as well, but I'll take you through it. This is a very typical model of what an SRB flow chart looks like. None of this is really new to any of us, but I think it's important that we highlight the three tiers, starting at the bottom. This is the biggest tier. This is where all children are, and that is basically the regular ed classroom. All children are in this tier. So everyone is getting the services of a Tier One program. And you can see, it's designed to meet the needs of the majority of students, reading, learning, math instructions differentiated within the classroom. At Tier One, you see that middle arrow, you have universal screenings. Those universal screenings, we already do a few of them all the time, CMT and CAP, which you're well aware of, but we do such things at the elementary level as letter identification, concepts about print, we have benchmark reading and math assessments, the DRA 2, I'm sure many of you are familiar with that. At the upper levels, we also use the GATE'S reading test, we have common assessments, probes, we have the CAP test. So we have universal screens that are in place that give us benchmarks of students along the way. On the left, they meet the benchmarks and pretty much they're moving along in Tier One as they should be. If we find through these universal screens that do not meet the benchmarks, which is on the right, other things come into play. Further assessments are put in place, for example, core reading words, looking at phonemic awareness and spelling, vocabulary, we might do rate of reading if we feel that the students are not progressing the way we would want them to. There are checkpoints along the way. And the purpose for doing that is to determine the priorities for Tier Two intervention because what has been highlighted here, as you can imagine, is a student who is not progressing at the rate that we would like to see. What are the top three or four things we want to work in as we move to Tier Two? So let's go up the line. Tier Two is described as classroom instruction continues. That's something that continues for all kids, but you put in place additional supports along the way focused on what, what was highlighted down in Tier One through those other assessment, assessments. What are the key areas and the priorities that we want to focus in? This is where your early intervention teams, and we have them at all levels, right up through the high school, would come together because a student has, you know, been pointed out that they need some extra support, or a teacher has brought that student forward as a result of looking at the data. And the team would come together and there would be the principal, there would be school psychologists, maybe the speech and language folks, there might be a special education teacher, classroom teachers. And their purpose is to really take a hard look at that student, take a look at what's been done in the classroom, and design a plan with those research-based interventions that focuses on the needs of that particular student. And that requires frequent progress monitoring. So within the classroom setting, a language arts specialist may go in and assist the teacher or assist that particular student. A special education teacher might go in, or an early literacy tutor might go in. Or the student might also receive services on a one-to-one basis with one of those special area folks. But it's a frequent progress monitoring brought back to the team. If after a period of time, because you've done frequent progress monitoring and you've got the data to show this, you come back to the team and say, you know, we've tried this intervention and this intervention and this one, and we're not seeing the growth that we want to see. Then you would step it up to the next notch, which is Tier Three. Again, classroom instruction continues with intensive support in literacy or math for targeted students who have not really responded to the Tier One and Tier Two interventions. Again, what, what the point here is, is that you want to meet the children right where their, where their needs are. And you don't want to go overboard with the interventions right off the bat if the, if the students aren't making benchmarks along the way. However, if they don't, you want to get in there with some intensive stuff and that's what's occurring at Tier Three. So by way of summary, I've put these three charts together. Tier One at a glance, the students involved here, it's the whole class. Of course, the teacher could work with individual students as needed or flexible groups. The interventionist, if you will, is the classroom teacher. The curriculum is the common standards-driven curriculum that we have in place. The instruction is differentiated. The instruction is differentiated, it's based on student data, as I mentioned, through the universal screens and the other assessments that we do, and it's research-based. And the progress monitoring are the typical formative and summative assessments that occur within a regular classroom, as well as those universal screens three times a year. Tier two, in addition to tier one, the students, typically it's individual or small group, and those groups are grouped by skill or by strategy if necessary. The interventionists are determined at the school level in terms of what would be appropriate. But you're looking obviously at classroom teachers, specialists. At the elementary level, instructional improvement teachers, instructional tutors. Those would be the people that you might tap into to assist. The curriculum is the same curriculum. The instruction, again, supplements tier one. So you may be putting into place some other pieces, but the students are getting the full curriculum. And it's also differentiated. And then the progress monitoring, you see, it gets stepped up a little bit more. There are more frequent probes and assessments of those target skills, and it's individualized to what the student needs. Tier three, again, it gets moved up a notch from tier one into tier two. You see the students, it's more individual, small group, grouped by skill. The same interventionist, you may, of course, special education teachers would also put in that column, they'd fall under the specialist area. Moving over to the instruction, you see that it's sustained intensive instruction that supplements tiers one and two. And the progress monitoring, again, is frequent and individualized. So the main difference here is really that it's much more intensive and sustained for a period of time. And then finally, I just, three resources that you can go to, and there are many, many more that further explain this. But since this is also going to be given to a parent group tomorrow evening, I thought that the parent resources would be helpful to them. And that concludes the presentation. I hope that that was clear enough. Notice the slides that I gave you were all black and white, so I tried to make it as black and white as possible. But I'm certainly here to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for members of the board? Mrs. Iacono.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Rosado, it's very helpful. My question is, how long does it take a student to meet their tiers? How long would they possibly be struggling, for instance, in tier one before they're identified and then getting help in tier two?
Well, the tier one happens all the time. So with the universal screen right at the beginning of the year, you would immediately identify a student who's not making a particular benchmark in reading, math, or writing. So in an elementary classroom, for example, those universal screens are given right at the beginning of the year, and anybody who is falling below would want that, that would be a flag right there. And I know the teachers that I have worked with would immediately go and seek assistance around that child. Moving beyond that, they would want to get more data before they go, you know, necessarily further with going to tier two with that. We don't want to go too far with too many interventions in terms of that, but, you know, right away. But we want to collect some more data.
What about at the upper, the secondary levels where kids are struggling?
Well, the same, the same universal screens are in place at the secondary levels. We're looking at a ninth grade reading assessment. All ninth graders, of course, will know where they are through sixth, seventh, and eighth, but we want to be sure when they transition into high school that they've held their own. And of course, at tenth grade, we have the CAP as well.
Mrs. Brand, did Mr. Webber?
Thank you, Mr. Rosado, because, Dr. Rosado, excuse me, because Dr. Rosado has actually answered a whole host list of questions for me already. But I did want to ask a couple of things. Do we have an implementation time for when we're going to do this kind of program? And will this be actually in place of what we have come to know in a special ed program? So the approach will be different?
I defer to my colleagues, but we are already moving. Any of these components are already in place, but it certainly doesn't replace our special education.
Absolutely, it doesn't replace special education. It is part and parcel of a more systemic approach to look at struggling learners. You remember back in, I want to think, back in maybe August, we talked about applying for an extension to the full implementation of the new guidelines for the identification of children with learning disabilities. And this will play a role. I don't want to confuse this with one absolutely leads to the other at all. This is a primary prevention model. It's about getting in early, getting in intensively, and filling in for kids who are struggling before they fail. So the purpose of an SRBI plan is really to benefit all kids, including children with disabilities, to understand where everybody is against a common standard. Intervene early, short-term fixes wherever possible. And when you need more intensive fixes, it might take longer, then that's what special ed looks like. But it builds a whole series of supports to scaffold for all kids. I couldn't be more excited about this. Ready to go?
I believe this was also involved in the program section of the strategic plan. Right that way, I actually, this I knew would be a concern, and that's why I actually ruined it up. And the other thing I had a concern about, to be honest with you, was the high school. We have students who have been very regularly at the elementary. My concern is really the high school years because the courses aren't necessarily for all your courses, and there's so many electives. Where are we looking in the CAPs, as you said, in tenth grade? So do we have a plan for any kind of other?
Yes. In addition to the common assessments that we are working on, one of the things that we wanted to be sure is that what we develop are valid and reliable. So we are working with UConn, actually, we're working closely with a professor of statistics there to work with us as a district. We have researched programs that are canned that we could purchase, but frankly, we didn't find any that suited our needs really well or that we felt could be implemented easily at the high school level. We have large high schools and we didn't feel that that would work. But we did feel that our curriculum lends itself with our common assessments to working with an outside consultant, if you will, to help us develop our own ninth-grade screens. And that's what we're looking to do. We start in ninth grade because we know that all kids take certain classes in the ninth grade. And then with the tenth grade, then as we look at those benchmarks, we could tailor some things for some kids in the tenth grade. By eleventh and twelfth, their schedules go in different directions and it would be very difficult to do universal screens at that level.
Mr. Webber?
Thank you, Dr. Rosado. These, the subject matters that you're talking about are essentially those subject matters that are tested and going through the CMT and then the CAP. Writing, math, and science. Is there a plan to go into science some day?
I think the main plan here is to make sure that basic reading and writing skills are in place, in particular, and math, so that science, social studies, and the other curriculum areas can, they can be successful in those. If you can't read well or, you know, do math very well, you're not going to be successful as you go down the line in those other areas. So at this point, no, we're really focusing on those core skills.
And after the end of tenth grade, that's it for those kids?
Meaning?
Would you do this to a student who's taken the CAP?
We have, we, actually, we have a process in place for students who do not pass the CAP.
Right.
Which involves a whole portfolio of work that they have to do.
Once you've taken the CAP and, you know, you've scored and you're proficient or whatever, does this end? I guess that's my question.
In this iteration, I would say yes, but we're always monitoring the progress of the students. So we will have student performance data K through 12, but the universal screens become very difficult to do in eleventh and twelfth grade because the kids' individual schedules don't lend themselves to that. But we will be screening for reading in the ninth grade and in the tenth grade. You know, we're looking at that, but the CAP already does have a screen for reading.
And when you say screen, you're really saying, you know, essentially, it's not a graded test, but it's a test.
It's a test, but when I say screen, I mean all kids get it.
And I guess I just have a little, the word "research-based" for interventions and then "research-based instruction." What do you mean by "research-based"? Is it just reflective of the best instructional methods out there? Or is it really data on the child?
No, it's research on the intervention or the materials that we're going to be using to address the needs of the particular student. So we don't want to just purchase a program or create a program that doesn't have any research behind it. We want something that's valid, reliable, has a track record of showing progress. And, you know, I think just by default, a lot of this happens at the early elementary years. We want to catch kids early. And as they go up through our, if they stay with us all the way through, we're going to know well in advance when kids are struggling. But the programs that we're putting in place in those tier-two and tier-three levels, they really do need to be research-based so that we can say with certainty, this is a valid program, it's been vetted, thousands of kids around the country or maybe, you know, tens of thousands have participated, and these are the results. And that's what we've looked at and have gone after.
In the elementary school, it's easier because they're just a classroom teacher who's involved in that screening, but when you get into middle school, you're going to involve other personnel from the school as well.
Yes, but we can use some of the same screens from the elementary right up through eighth grade without really much difficulty.
And for those kids who are identified by other means, certainly can be, I mean, this doesn't mean that there aren't any other ways of identifying kids.
A parent, certainly, a parent, a teacher, anybody. But certainly, in terms of the academic world, we would know through this process. We know now, but this just makes it more, it makes it much more standardized across the district, which is a good thing.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Are there further questions or comments on the presentation? Seeing none, thank you, Dr. Rosado. And our next item is the presentation of the 2010-2011 student calendar. Dr. Blum, I would like to...
Thank you. Mr. Goel.
Thanks, Dr. Blum. Thanks, Dr. Blum. In closing your packet, enclosure number three, gives a draft of the calendar for the 2010-2011 school year. Front sheet shows the draft that's based on the guidelines that have been established by the board. Both the board policy and administrative regulations are also attached. It actually provides for 182 senior days, 187 staff days. Five of those days are for some type of professional development experience. It allows for about seven weeks between the holiday break in December and the February break, and about seven weeks between the February break and the April break. And school would tentatively be, the last day would be June 17th, given the snow days and the like. Have also, is one of the considerations that we take a look at, is our regional programs, the regional calendar, so included in the VAC sheet, the CES, Educational Services calendar, and our calendar very closely hovers that, so that youngsters who are involved in regional programs can have full access to them. Again, by the policy, this is the first go-round on this. We'll make sure that it's available for folks, and then we'd be, the expectation to vote on it at the next Board of Education meeting. Do you have any questions, if there are?
Mrs. Zahn?
Thank you. And thank you for this. It looks, you know, follows all our guidelines. My only, and I hope we could add this, since this has been a problem in the past. I'm looking at September, and I'm looking at Wednesday the 8th and Friday the 17th, which would be the evenings of the Jewish High holidays. I was hoping we could have no after-school activities posted for both of those days.
We can make a note of that.
Well, a note and something written on the calendar that can't happen.
I meant a note on the calendar.
Yeah.
Is that what you mean?
That's what I mean.
Right, a note on, I meant a note on the calendar.
And also, I, if, also, if this were the life, I would, I would stop in three years for the calendar instead of doing this every year.
Do board members want to comment on adopting multiple-year calendars? I'll start with Mrs. Kupchak.
I mean, I could see what you're saying, Stacy. In the past, we would have a long line of people at the microphone to talk about the calendar. It was a big deal every year. Changes made, making sure that vacations, that there wasn't short periods that students were out and holidays and vacations. I mean, I'm up for it. I did want to ask, just clarify, the request that you made, Mrs. Zahn, regarding the two High holidays, two Jewish High holidays. No after-school activities at all for any students?
It always runs into a problem where there'll be practice, and while practice can still be over before sundown, those children still have to get home on a bus, get through traffic, shower, and, you know, get ready for significant holiday.
Now, what have we done in the past? Do the students, though, just not participate in those two days? The handful of students that are in those?
Mrs. Zahn?
Again, we've run into, in the past, where there have been games, and the students feel obligated to, you know, they're torn.
Is it just athletic?
It's athletic as far as I know, I'm sure it goes into other things.
Clubs or... But if they're not traveling or anything, if a club just needs to go to school... I mean, I think we're going to have to have a broader discussion about this because I'm not sure I'm in favor of shutting down all activity for everybody in the entire school district if it's not, if it's not affecting every area. If kids, students can still go to a club and be home in time, other activities.
Well, then again, we get into the same discussion of homework, and that doesn't seem to follow any guideline. So I find it the same issue. If we don't say none, then...
You mean no homework?
We've had an issue with homework in the past. And while it's being addressed, it's still, there's no, it's not followed.
Mrs. Iacono?
I would just like to echo what Mrs. Zahn is saying, and I think that faculty and advisors would probably be appreciative of a measure like this as well. What Mrs. Zahn is proposing, just to not have after-school activities period on those two days.
These two dates are the evening that precedes the full day of the holiday, correct, Mrs. Zahn?
Correct.
Okay. And for those who might not be aware, the holiday starts at sundown on the 8th and on the 17th. And while technically we're still in a time of year when sundown might be at 7:30, quarter to 8, you understand that the holiday for the families starts, such as it does on Christmas Eve, a lot earlier than midnight. And if they're at a swim meet that gets back at 6 o'clock, and their family might like to go to 6 o'clock services or have their family dinner, whatever their celebration is, I think, is that the problem, Mrs. Zahn? Is that what you're...
That is part of the problem, yes.
Mrs. Brand and Mr. Matola, I think this is headed to policy.
Yeah, I thought policy was going to look at this.
Well, if the ones were looking at the calendar, I thought we should discuss this.
Mrs. Brand and Mr. Matola next.
I think it actually would be very helpful for the district so that they all have a mutual understanding that we can basically make those days. If we're going to do that, I just think that we should notify the athletic directors post-haste because I know athletic schedules sometimes occur well in advance and they're locked. So I just want to make sure that whatever we do, we make sure we are careful and thorough about it.
Mrs. Zahn, would you like to respond?
I just wanted to note that we're also only into a week of school, so there really shouldn't be that much kicking in.
Mr. Matola?
I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I would be upset if there was after-school activities on Christmas Eve. It's the same concept, so I certainly appreciate and understand where Mrs. Zahn's coming from. You know, we should probably make a note on the calendar, and if the policy's... That's fine. I'd ask, though, that there be some coordination with the athletic departments also, the FCAC. and so on and so forth.
Mrs. Down?
Just adding to that, Mr. Matola's point, looking at the 17th, that already could be, I mean, Friday Night Football now, that could be a problem with scheduling. So that is something that you'd need to fill the athletic directors in on to go through the... Because they would do the whole FCAC scheduling, so...
The FCAC generally honors that, essentially, no contest there.
So, Mrs. Zahn? I'm sorry, Mr. Matola?
Just to forego with that, why, since I've been on the Board, we've looked at this every year. I don't think it's that... Why is there... I guess I question you, Mrs. Zahn, is what's the upside of looking, doing calendars three years in advance? I mean, I have trouble planning my life next week, but I don't know three years from now, so I don't have a problem doing this every year. But I'm over-minded about it, so I would ask you, tell me why you think that's a good idea.
So we don't have to sit here every year for a half an hour, you know, and go over it. It could be easy. It's been very difficult in the past, where it's been hours discussing the calendar. We've been fortunate. I think if we follow what we have here, because it doesn't seem to be an issue over the last few years, it shouldn't be an issue that we schedule three years in advance.
For maybe. The issue for me, the last few years, has been the Veterans Day, and I think we've resolved that. I would hate to have a calendar three years out, and we find out in year two that for some reason that calendar didn't work, and we want a year-three calendar for whatever reason. I mean, again, I'm over-minded about it, but I don't think it's that big of a deal to look at this every year at this time or minutes. I mean, my four years here, we debated the Veterans Day a lot. That was, in my experience memory, that was the item that took up a lot of time. I mean, there's only so many ways you can do a school calendar. This isn't... This isn't brain surgery, Mr. Boyle. I don't mean to insult you about it, but it is what it is, so... That's right. That's my sideline, brain surgery.
After retirement.
I don't mind looking at it every year. If there's consensus that we should do it three years out, I guess that's okay. We have other pressing issues besides this calendar.
Mrs. Brand?
Actually, in this instance, I'd rather we do it annually. We have construction projects coming up, and we have found in the past that sometimes if we need some flexibility and we anticipate a construction project being a little bit more challenging, it allows for us to have a little leeway. Honestly, that's the only reason. I just, sometimes those can be very tight schedules, you know, so...
Mr. Boyle?
I was just going to comment. In the past, I think parents like to have two or three years out so that they can plan their vacations. Some are more structured than you, Mr. Matola. I wanted to get back at you. However, on the downside of that, what we've done in... One of the reasons that in the past few years that we've had less of a conflict, except for the Veterans Day piece, is because we closely mirrored the CES calendar, which allowed them to adopt their calendar, and then we adopted our calendar. They don't do theirs three years out. So I wouldn't want to get into a situation, although I like the idea of going two or three years out, of having to adopt the calendar and make some modifications because of the regional programs. And years ago, we used to get into that.
Any further comments, questions on the calendar? We will see it again next month for adoption, and the... Mr. Boyle, you will make the change in September to reflect Mrs. Zahn's concerns on this two dates.
We'll make a note on it in September, and we'll widely publicize the Family Guide and the information for the administrators.
And to the staff.
Right. I mean, we'll make a note on the calendar, but we'll make sure that the Family Guide is where it's noted.
And to Mrs. Kupchak's point, I think the Policy Committee eventually will be looking at the policy that relates to some of the concerns on the holidays generally, not just those holidays, and Mrs. Zahn's comment on the homework issue. So I just add more to the list for the Policy Committee to do. Moving on to policy and our next item. Policy number 3543, electronic communications use and retention, and policy number 6130, emergency and disaster preparedness. And I will go to the Policy Committee, and Mr. Boyle?
I'll take them one at a time. Mrs. Nash is here, manager of information technology, and she and Mr. Cullen have put together the electronic communications and use of retention. And it really clearly identifies the process for retaining electronic email and the like. And we're fortunate that we have a system that will hold on to electronic email, so it really doesn't change individual folks' practice here, because we automatically retain that. Rather, a policy outlining that for everyone. The other piece, it is not included here, but it will come up when the Board has their annual meeting, as a suggested change to the bylaws that outlines the use of email, but that's something we'll have for a different day. And again, if you have questions, I'll be happy to answer, and more appropriately, I think Mrs. Nash will be able to answer them as well.
Are there any questions on either of these policies? We will be seeing them for adoption next month. Mr. Weber?
One.
On this first policy. Mr. Weber on the first one?
Could you get Mr. Boyle, plus the general letter, 981? Does that set forth all the retention periods? Set the state library?
We can get that forward, right? I think it does.
Yes, the retention periods for all town and municipal.
Yeah, I mean, it says retention, but there's nothing in here that... It's just reference to that.
Right. But when CAGE developed the model policy, which we followed for the most part, we edited it based on our own information, those are the general guidelines that we follow. But we can get that.
Yeah, we agree. And who's the records custodian?
The records custodian is Mr. Cullen, I believe.
And just one more thing, just kind of... Third paragraph, see the last sentence? I'm sorry. Last sentence in the third paragraph. Giving the electronic communications, cleaning records.
Last sentence.
The superintendent, first page, every whole paragraph, last sentence. Yeah. It talks about litigation, but it doesn't mirror what's said on the next page about litigation, paragraph two. Most importantly, it does talk about future litigation. So if you could sort of work those two sentences so they say the same thing. Do you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And then the first sentence, just change that. It says, "The policy applies from retention, storage, and destruction of electronic information records within the district's hands." Could you change that to a "but"? That's it.
Are there questions or comments on this policy? Mrs. Zahn?
I just want to thank Mr. Boyle for getting this out to the Board prior to its meeting.
Oh, we thought people would be... Thank you.
The next one, Mr. Boyle?
The next one was suggested that we have a policy that identifies certain emergency and disaster preparedness. And I worked carefully to review a lot of policies, not only CAGE suggested policies, but policies that were put together by the school districts. And this is, I guess, for the lack of a better term, is the front page for the policy, but there are many administrative regulations that are almost too numerous, and I think Mr. Cullen brought them for artifacts for you. Because what we did was, and Mrs. Brand's laughing, and she was there when we did this. I mean, we had a... I feel like Anna White here. A flip chart, stand up. You could stand up and...
This is the town's emergency operation plan. And there's a large section in here dedicated just to the school system. And then adding onto a piece of that, we've been working with the fire department and the police department to come up with the flip chart that I think a lot of you know about, because a lot of the teachers and staff have a large binder on what to do in an emergency, and a lot of districts are going to a flip chart that they can flip too quickly, keeping their desk or on their desk. That was adopted. And we just recently threw the strategic plan on facilities. We did a whole piece on larger emergency disaster plan. What would the district do if one, two, or numerous schools were closed, or we had to move off of those sites? And how we would react, how we would do the transportation, the staffing, and all of that. So what Jack Boyle's saying is, behind this front page, there's other administrative regulations that can be attached to it that are all these pieces.
Unfortunately, the quantity of them and the shape in terms of the flip chart probably does not lend itself to a normal administrative regulation, so we'll need some discussion with the Policy Committee actually how to handle that. But there is a lot of backup material. And all the backup material has gone and has been discussed with the fire, police department's chief, deputy chief, fire marshal.
As well as other districts.
So, I mean, there was a coordinated effort on part of the school district and the town for this topic.
Questions? Mr. Matola?
Forgive me for asking this. Did we... You said the strategic...
Strategic plan for facilities.
That they just recently did that?
That one is pretty recent, it's this year.
Can we get a copy of that yet?
Not yet. Because of... There's three pieces that have to be attached to it. Mostly, the emergency disaster and relocating a school is getting it off the campus or out of even the town of Fairfield. So you have to have a joint agreement with two large facilities in Fairfield and one or two outside of Fairfield. We have recently received letters for the two facilities in Fairfield, the Fairfield University and Sacred Heart. Essentially, it's an agreement that they're to be held harmless. If anything happens while we have 10,000 students on their campus and buses coming and going. It is a gentleman's agreement, but it's a letter. The third one is in Bridgeport. We've been working on Bridgeport Operation Center, now at Harvey Yard. And we're still trying to get things locked up with them getting right. So once it is, those three pieces get attached to the plan that's been drafted up, and then we will share it with the Board.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Mr. Boyle?
At the next meeting, we'll have a suggested policy for pandemic, just so Boyle is aware of that. It's something that we've worked on, town health, and they're still redoing it.
Okay, thank you. And we'll have these for approval at our next meeting. Moving on to our next item, we have discussion of 2009-2010 Board of Education priorities. This item is on the agenda so that the Board can have a brief discussion of the work that we have before us this particular year. And in priority, starting with the superintendent search, as everyone is aware. And we also, as board members know, but we would like the public to know, that we also have five contracts to negotiate this year, possibly seven. I look to Mrs. Fitzgerald, and yes, possibly seven, which is taking up a great deal of board members' time and the Board's time. And on the heels of that, and at actually the same time all of that work is going on, we will have the budget process that will commence, and the administration has already started their work on that budget, and we'll be hearing more about that in the coming months. And then we have the other issue that the Board has worked on in the past and will get to again, probably in the late winter, early spring, when we have new enrollment for... Mr. Boyle, and we have probably better information from the Fairfield Woods Building Committee on that project in looking at the feeder pattern at the secondary level and what that would mean to any realignment of any other school lines. I don't know if board members see a different set of priorities, if they want to discuss that at this time. I don't know if we work on the... Looking at the long-range plan and the facilities work, late winter, spring, what that would mean for the timeline, and we would need some input from Mr. Boyle and the thoughts of board members. Are there any thoughts on the first three items of work? That's pretty straightforward. We... Our first priority right now this year is working on the superintendent search, the contracts, the budget. Does anyone at the Board table see that differently? Mrs. Iacona?
No, I don't see it differently, but just for the benefit of the fellow, can you... The timeframe for budget is generally November to March in terms of...
Yes.
I just want to be clear, you know, in terms of time.
Right. For anyone who doesn't understand, the process goes for quite a few months. And Mr. Matola?
One of the things that came up when we were sitting with the NEAS people, that's last Sunday, was... And I don't know if this is something we want to wait until after July. I'm not sure why we want to do this or how we... It's just an idea. But there was some discussion of looking at our high school curriculum almost in audit of it, because there was a sense that in... That we add curriculum, but do we ever take a step back and look at certain courses that may not be well attended anymore?
That's right. It wasn't curriculum, it was program.
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 So there was some discussion. Stacy was there, Kathy Alden was there, Sue was there, and there was some discussion about looking into that. So I would like to get the ball rolling on something like that. I'm not sure when the appropriate time is to look at that, or maybe that's something the central administration could start looking at. I mean, the concept is this. I mean, we're gonna have to... I strongly believe, and this may be go to another type of audit that maybe the district needs to do at some time, we're gonna have to find ways to save money in this district if we want to maintain the high level of education that we have. And, you know, I'm not quite sure how to do that. And I think this Board, well, and especially the new Board, is gonna have to start looking at that. I'm not saying we're not trying to do that, but I think somehow, in some ways, it behooves us to, you know, take a look at ourselves and how we do certain things. I mean, I have a fear that at some point, the community is gonna be at a breaking point with budgets. And I think we have to demonstrate that we're doing our absolute best to try to save money and maintain the curriculum and the programs that we have. And I know the administration's working very hard at this, but I think at some point that the next Board's gonna have to take a closer look at that. So I don't know if that's gonna be a priority in the next four or five months. I think we're gonna have a superintendent that... gonna have a superintendent, but I think it's something that we need to keep in the back of our minds. But I think at the very least, we can look at that high school. And I don't know if anyone who was at the NEAS meeting agrees with what I'm saying with respect to that.
Having been at that meeting with you, Mr. Matola, thank you for bringing this up. Yes, it was, it was something that was mentioned and discussed in that session that we were in. And looking especially at the secondary level and primarily at the high school level, evaluating the program to know, in effect, how are particular programs and courses performing? The service they're providing, who they're reaching out to, and I don't know if that's something that we have the time this year to take on, but I leave that open to the board to discuss if they want to for a few minutes. Mrs. On.
No, I think that's something that we can take on. It was just really to update the program of studies. You know, they asked us, do programs go because of lack of enrollment? You know, obviously, we get presentations when new programs are implemented, but they wanted to know how a program of studies gets streamlined. So I don't think that's a really complicated thing. So I think that we definitely accomplish that, I'll just say community.
And that's, yeah, for policy. It's policy and curriculum, so you can take that on. Continuing list of jobs, we throw your one.
My pleasure.
Mr. Matola, he has a home. First questions or comments on the priorities as outlined? Mrs. Brand?
One of the things I actually mentioned to Mr. Cullen the other night at a meeting, we have Fairfield Woods building project that we both hold forward. It is already beginning. But perhaps it would be smart to then have the three middle school administrators, the two high school administrators, meet with the subcommittee on facilities, technology, long-range plan in December, when we have our projections in. And they know their sites better. They can tell us what they can handle, they can also tell us what they need. We can talk about the various feeder pattern options, and the educational impact as well as the facility. We know that Ludlow High School right now is struggling with the size of its cafeteria as right now. But I think whether we go, which high school has five, which high school has six, how we work that feeder pattern, how we plan it out, I think we'll also need to take into account and plan ahead so that we can budget what changes in the facilities will be necessary. So that by the time that work's done, the kids are all, are in there, we're not trying to catch up after the kids are in there. I think it would also, for the town, be able to validate that we have a plan in place and will be utilizing the kind of modifications if they're needed at all, but what, that we will be demonstrating we need in doing it that way.
Iaccona and Mrs. Kupchak?
Two things. One, I just then want to be clear again for the benefit of the public that we probably wouldn't be getting to a middle school feeder discussion for the first part. Would that be a good guess at the table? Yes?
Sea heads nodding yes.
Okay. And then the second thing is, I just wanted to touch upon what Mr. Matola said in terms of an operational audit of sorts. And I think it's a good idea that, you know, we start to think about that and figure out how we can possibly do more with less or find more somewhere to help us along those same lines that Mr. Matola addressed before, I think, support us trying to figure out how to do that.
You're talking about an operational audit, he's talking about a work with program of studies. Are they, this two are the same?
No, he brought up two issues.
Okay, so, so are you suggesting that the board undertake that work?
I think we should start to look at it and see what it's, what it costs to do that, what it entails, what are the details, you know? Is it something that, is it cost, is there a cost benefit to it?
Will the finance and budget public relations committee be willing to take that on as the curriculum policy?
We would be happy to take that on.
And they can report back to the board in a few months?
Yes.
Okay.
Provided I'm still here next.
Mrs. Kupchak?
I just want to echo, I was gonna say basically the same thing Mrs. Brand said. Our facilities committee met last week and we moved things up and things that were caught from our budget, projects that we had voted on and wanted to be in our timeline and obviously not make it. There are things, and Mrs. Brand is smart to note, that our high school cafeteria, whichever one we're going to keep, being the one that has a sick school feed into it, it's gonna need room. Ludlow is busting and there's locker issues, and we learned a lot about it in our last meeting. Hopefully, we'll have that, the updated facilities plan for this board to vote on before November. Because we just basically moved up things that we didn't have because of budget to really cut. Also, the lease up at the co-op facility. And that is something the board's gonna have to tackle. Hopefully, we'll be able to keep that property. It's a lovely place for those kids, and in this place, too. So there are things that document, and I think the board would be very smart to, once, and we've updated that, once the board approves it and updates it again in December with community numbers, to again send it out to the new elected officials in November. Because we all know, we hear from everyone, they don't know what we're doing and they're caught off guard, and there's no reason for them to say that anymore, because we've been very good about putting that document together and sharing it with the other elected officials in town. So I would highly recommend that that go out again, and just to make sure that people understand that we need some things. Maybe the audit will help us cut back on some of our operational concerns and find some of these other things.
Thanks, Mrs. Kupchak. That's a good suggestion, to send that out again. Further comments, questions on the list of priorities? I hope it's helpful for the public to hear the work that we know we have in front of us and what we'll be doing. So your subcommittee, Mrs. On, and Mrs. Iaccona's subcommittee just have new assignments. And moving on, we have reports from members of the Board of Education. And I will go to Sarah Finlaw, our representative from Fairfield Ludlow High School. Good evening.
Good evening. This past week, although, we had our spirit week, where the seniors dressed up and ended on Friday with the spirit day of the entire school, our pep rally. On Saturday, we had our homecoming game, which we won. And we had our dance, which was successful. And upcoming at Ludlow this month are the fall concerts on October 22nd and October 29th. And that's it.
Thank you. And I, we do not yet have a liaison from Fairfield Board. I see Mr. Coyne in the back of the room. Is there a chance we will be meeting one soon?
Boys have signed on as of last week, so they should meet you.
Thank you. We look forward to that. Moving on, Mrs. Brand?
In terms of the Board of Health, Mr. Cullen and I both attended a CAVE program that was discussing the H1 plan and what districts are doing. One had to do with the pandemic policy. The emphasis was primarily on communication and having a designated spokesperson, as well as developing and having a plan in place. A lot of districts have done their pandemic plan and worked it out with their health department. And the other thing is about the continuity of school and instruction time. Again, making sure what our plan is, if we're not able to have 180 days, either throughout the district or certainly at any particular site, and what kind of continuity we're going to be able to provide, obviously, you know, online, what our backup will be. They talked about, obviously, a whole lot more than that, but certainly, Mr. Cullen wants to add, we're going to rely on these. The only other thing I have is, the pandemic policy did come straight from CAVE. And Fairfield Woods Building Committee, oh, the, Sue, the next board of health meeting is next week at St. Anthony's first name.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Have you been there at the CAVE meeting or through the board of health meetings you've been to? Have you, have you found whether or not there's gonna be the H1 and one flu vaccination vaccine enough for everyone? Because my, my kids went to the doctor last week, and the pediatric group that comes to this entire town, and it was made pretty clear that he doesn't think there's gonna be enough of that vaccine going around for every child in Connecticut. Now, I was wondering, have you heard anything else?
I, I think the safest thing for me to tell you is that the H1 and one is, is a pandemic and it is a moving target. Information keeps coming out. What we know now are they are rationing the H1 and one vaccine for high priority groups, the first being pregnant women. And then it keeps going down the line. They also are looking at locations. So if a doctor's office signs up and fills out the forms and wants to have the H1 and one vaccine, there are two different kinds. One, the live virus, and two, which is the nasal spray. And two, the dead virus, which is an injection. Certain people are automatically prohibited from the corner at risk from having the live, which ironically happens to be, for instance, pregnant women. The dead virus actually is something that should be available, but that's gonna be available a little bit later. They have to have, the sites have to have security, have to have their priorities in place, they have to have proper storage as well, and this all has to be documented. Right now, we are, they believe at any rate in the second wave. Our first wave here was in the spring. And the Midwest and the South are now seeing, like 27 states are seeing a huge amount of absentees when we, but we don't often have a pandemic. And when we did have one in 1917, I don't know that the documentation, well, I think it's comfortably safe to say, the documentation now is far better and communication is far better now than it was then. That's good and bad, in that we're all pretty much up to date. You can go and look, there are a number of websites, the State Department of Health, the CDC, the National Institute of Health. What the district is doing currently is basically your initial piece, which is mostly preventative in nature, washing hands, making sure children do it on a regular basis. I know Mr. Cullen that has placed, and we've done some hand washing programs, we have signs up in place. We honestly don't know how much vaccine will be available, how necessary it will be, the timing of this, whether we're going to have this. We're hoping, quite honestly, that this does not overlap. They're hoping that the peak of the H1 and one comes in November. We don't know if it will start to overlap into the December, January, February, March, which is our regular flu season, and will clearly have a much more profound impact on absences if that happens. We don't know. So honestly, what we've been telling people is to check the websites, stay up to date, wash your hands, if you're ill, please stay home. If we start to see the benchmarks or hallmarks, where it's starting to move in this area in a different category, then there are protocols already clearly delineated from the CDC, what actually schools should do, which is what I'm sure we're gonna be looking at with the pandemic policy. Quite frankly, we'll help spell that out and give some guidance for that. I don't have a specific answer for you, because honestly, I don't think anyone knows. I got a call.
No, thank you. Just one other point. It was interesting, I was reading an article the other day. There's at least a theory that it is, it has not been prevalent around here so far. And it was very prevalent in the spring, New York City, New York State, Boston, even Utah and Connecticut had very high rates of the virus. And there's at least a theory that many of us got exposed already, may not have gotten sick, so they haven't, they haven't seen it here very high as opposed to some other areas in the country. So, I mean, no one really knows what the answers are, but that was just another theory that was floating out.
All I can tell you is, I'd like to think that sounds really wonderful and right, and I certainly hope you are right. But in lieu of that, I still think follow the same protocols that we've already clearly delineated. If you feel ill, stay home, wash your hands. Because I'm hoping that's the case, but I don't think we can confirm it. And I know it hasn't been confirmed. So I know they're thinking that might be the case, and I hope they're right. But until we're sure, I think we stay the course and do what we're doing now. The other piece I had was the Fairfield Woods Building Committee, and they interviewed three different firms. They had chosen an estimator, and only an estimator, as opposed to a general manager, a general contractor. And this is, quite frankly, someone who does, evaluates the site, has subcontractors they hire, evaluate the land, the survey, there are a number of things that go on in that. And based on their findings, they then take direction from the building committee and give them different kinds of plans, in construction plans, conceptual ones, of what could be done on the site. And then with an estimate. And this particular group is Turner Construction. And as I said, it has nothing to do with the construction portion. It is literally just walking in and giving a price tag. And what they're gonna do is give a grocery list of price tags. So it's gonna be broken down, just on what various things will, or could be done.
One question. Where's the location of the October 22nd meeting?
For, for the first thing. We've been having those at town hall, in the conference room.
Mrs. Down?
Yes, hi. Subdues. First off, as Dr. Zado mentioned, there's supposed to be a presentation tomorrow on the SRBI. And it's a whole panel discussion. Mrs. Leonardi will be there, as well as many of the curriculum leaders, the heads. And after the presentation, there will also be an open question and answer session. So if anyone out there thinks of some questions overnight or has some concerns, you can show up at McKinley for the presentation. Town hall type meeting tomorrow night and have those questions answered. They, as far as fundraising goes, they have been awarded this year the Burr Mansions Christmas Tree Festival quilt raffle. So they have the potential of making up to $20,000 on this quilt raffle, if we all go out and buy a raffle ticket, which is only $5. However, they do have 4,000 of them to sell. So we hope we'll be able to buy more than one and ask your friends and neighbors. They will be obviously at the Burr Mansion, you know, Christmas festival, selling them, but they, all members are going to have them on their person ahead of time. And so, beginning in the next, I know they said they'd have them in November, I'm not sure exactly when they're getting them, but I'll let you know. And then you can just contact a member and buy them there. And along with the quilt, they will also be, the winner will also receive a basket that Septa is putting together. And the basket is valued at about $675. Contains such wonderful things as tickets for Ford to Serv du Soleil at the Garden, and train tickets into the Garden, dinner at Centros, Discovery Museum, family membership. So there's a lot that will go along besides just the quilt. They are also going to be busy planning a community awareness event for the spring. We are not sure what it will be, but some ideas have been floated around, like sponsoring a touch a truck, or having a golf tournament, or a walkathon. They're still looking through ideas, trying to find more and settle on that, but something they will have going in the spring. They are also looking into fielding a team. They are also looking into fielding a team for Special Olympics. The Special Olympics may be held. We were told that Fairfield will go this year, so there's a lot of talk about how SEPTA could work with the Special Olympics again. That's just being looked into, nothing, nothing definite. And, oh, they're trying to start a dad's group for a dad's night out. And I think that covers it. Other than that, their park and Combrack teams are up and running challenger soccer. This meeting on Saturdays, challenger basketball registration is now open. And also through Cal, they're going to have the Ray Greenberg basketball program again this year. That started, I believe, last year, was its first year and was successful, so they're going to do that again. And one other thing, though, they do have a new president, so that people have the right person. Unfortunately, the other, the president had stepped down for personal reasons, but the president-elect Linda Pryor was able to step up in her shoes and fill her place. So the new president now is Linda Pryor, so all material should be directed to her. I think that covers it. Thank you. Board event member out there, am I forgetting anything? Well, SEPTA is looking like it has covered everything, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Iacon.
Thank you. I have no report for finance, budget, and community relations. It wasn't eligible to get assessed, I'm sorry. I met prior to our board meeting with the Strategic Planning Communication Action Team, and we are making, in terms of getting a board website, an improved board website up and running. Jeff Burke came and spoke to the group about putting together pieces, so they have some things that they can start to work with, such as the policy guide and bylaws. But there are other pieces that I will be approaching each of you for your input on terms of the committees you work on, logistics, things like that, so that we can get all that information up on the website for e, for everyone to use, and hopefully it'll be something a lot easier and much more user-friendly. Special Projects Standing Building Committee, there was a request for funding from, made to the Board of Selectmen in terms of reconfiguring the bond distribution. I mentioned in my last report that there is still money left in the Sherman project. However, we're running in a deficit situation at Osborne Hill, so we asked the First Selectmen to help us resolve that, and Mr. Hiller has gone to bond council, and they've gotten approval to move $39,000 from Sherman to Osborne Hill. The bond council signed off on that, the Board of Selectmen signed off on that, the Board of Finance has tabled the discussion until their meeting next Tuesday night, and that's because they were looking for more information, members they got weren't clear. There are questions surrounding, I believe it was $61,000 that was used to, portable from the Osborne Hill project to the transportation site, which came out of the Sherman budget, and, and these are all issues that are coming from the First Selectmen's office, and they're dealing with that, with the Board of Finance. However, I do want to note that this request for $39,000 doesn't fully cover the expenses on the Osborne Hill project, and that's one of the issues the Board of Finance had as well. That would still leave Osborne Hill $800 in the hole. So I'm hoping at a minimum they would at least leave $39,800 so that we could be clean on this, or however the Board of Finance chooses to handle this situation, but I don't think that the $39,000 obviously was the right dollar. And also, you know, that we still have the issue of the smart boards that needs to get resolved at the Building Committee table. I don't know where that's going to go. Obviously, if there's no money at Osborne Hill, they're certainly not going to have funding to do smart boards. Whether or not this board, Special Projects Board will approve funding for the smart boards, as per the head specs on Sherman, I just don't know at this point. I anticipate we will discuss that at our meeting at the end of the month, which is the last Monday of the month. I don't know, the date is escaping me at the moment. I think it's October 26.
Thank you.
October 26 at 5:30 in Town Hall.
Thank you. Mrs. Captain. Just to follow up on our conversation about facilities, just to note that we did update the plan, we're bringing it next meeting, Mr. Weber. Hoping that the board will approve it so that the next board can have that structure going forward. Just to highlight that we did discuss Riverfield and the wanting to get right on that project in the timeline, which we have it in the, in the plan, and maintenance priorities. Some of the windows, as Mr. Cullen talked about, are really in poor condition in some of our schools, to the point where he didn't think we should, we're going to be able to wait because if he's getting pushed off or budget keeps getting cut, mostly the windows at Lobo High School. A plan for addressing, as Mrs. Brand was discussing earlier, either expanding cafeterias or even making arrangements for students to eat in classrooms, because the flow is just going to be too great to handle. So these are things that this, or the new board is going to have to really handle. I wish she still wanted to talk to me. So, you know, I, you know, I've always been someone who's really been interested in our facilities, and I, I do hope we stick to some of these things. I know it's tough in this budget cycle, but some of these things just can't be put off any longer. So there's going to be some prioritizing, that's going to, it's going to be done. Work and Rec meets in a couple of weeks, next week. And I got the CAPE information for the convention, I would just, I'll give this to the chairman. I would just recommend maybe asking all the new candidates if they're going to go, if they're going to go, and then just getting the slots, because I think it's a good idea for new people to have a bonding experience at the convention with the, with the members, sort of starting off together on fresh slate, so that's my refer.
Mr. Matoule.
The Straffield Building Committee, last week, I was unable to attend, our babysitter got sick at the last minute. We have a nice summary that was given to the board in our packet. I spoke to Al Kelly yesterday about what happened, and, and there was a lot of discussion about smart boards at the committee meeting. The bottom line is really this, at this point, they're, they're concerned that they're running out of money, not running out of money, but the budget's very, very tight. And, I mean, we have spent that committee about half a million dollars over and above what we anticipated on the oil tank, the second oil tank removal, the elevator issue and conservation. We had some additional expenses with respect to that. So, you know, for the public's benefit, that, right now, every single classroom, it's going to be built with a presentation station, the projector in the ceiling and a pull-down screen. And there's, there's going to be a wait-and-see, a wait-and-see as to whether or not smart boards can be included in Phase Five, which is the furniture phase, the FFNE. So I think people need to, you know, I guess it was a heated discussion about it. People need to take a step back, and, I mean, I think the most important thing about that project is we're going to have a renovated building. It's going to be set up for smart boards. If we can't afford to buy them right now, it's going to have the conduits and so on and so forth. So I think everyone needs to take a deep breath and see what happens over the next year or so. There was also some discussion at the meeting about, obviously, we would like to have random furniture in the building, because you're going to have a renovated school, and it would look nice to have new furniture. It costs about $9,000 per classroom to outfit the entire building. Again, the budget's tight, so there's been some construction to the architect, to at least look at some of the furniture that is in the building right now, and see if, if it can be used, if it's still good. But again, the idea is we would like to have new furniture in the entire building, but again, this is a tight, this is a tight budget. So that, that was, according to Al Kelly, the chairman, a great focus of the meeting of, of last week. And I, hopefully my babysitter won't get sick again at any more meetings, but, but other than that, the project's moving along, and things, things are going okay.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
In the previous projects that we've done, I think it's, it's always been considered capital and bond, but instructional materials, no, and I don't think we've ever done this for smart boards.
I'm not sure of that. I think, I think that, for example, I think part of the aspect was that, was part of the aspect to have the projections in the ceiling. What, what, we've gone through a transformation from the idea when we had hanging monitors such as you see here, and that was in the case of Lubbock Middle School and McKinley Elementary School. Okay. And then as we moved into the high school renovations, we had ceiling-mounted projection, projection stations, so they could become presentation stations being ceiling-mounted. What we've done now is we've asked that any of those ceiling-mounted projectors have the thrust that can be used with a smart board, because what happened in one of the high school projects is as we put them in, we put them in at the old level, and then had to reconfigure them as we put the smart boards in. Just picking up on the smart board issue, there was a discussion, I mean, I was at the meeting, and there was a lengthy discussion on that. I believe the Straffield Building Committee ended up that they would have an ad alternate for smart boards. So that if they have money available, the biggest issue in, that I got was the idea of bonding, and I think Mr. Weber, you're onto something here, about bonding materials that may not last for 20-year bond, and as I said at the meeting there, I've never been in support of bonding something that we paying for it far after it's not being used. So the question was, could you bond some of the furniture? Well, not necessarily furniture, because that could last 20 years. And I think there were, there's like 30% of the furniture that's more than, right, good to be reused. The, the, things like smart boards or other equipment, if you could bond at a different rate. We also discussed the idea that when you buy some of these pieces of equipment in FFNE as part of the building project, they're subject to reimbursement. Now, the reimbursement, we know, does not come back to the building committee, but comes back in the form of a reimbursement to the town. So it's almost like going, and I guess I'd like it, going to Lord &amp; Taylor or Macy's, and you have, buy your, you have a coupon to send in and get reimbursed, so you pay full price, but you get reimbursed afterwards. So that if we buy some of this equipment, or mainly the smart boards, you get it at almost a 25% reduction, net reduction. And the issue that was bonding it, if you have to bond it over 20 years, you know, that's probably not a good one.
What about the bigger issue, Mr. Matoule, as to, you know, state reimbursement for this project? I thought that the governors or legislature put all projects on hold, outlined a list of projects, and this certainly isn't one of them, because it hasn't gotten the RTM.
I, I can answer that question, but hasn't been any discussion about that in the meantime, there was something, something about that.
That's something we're watching really carefully. However, the amount we received for state reimbursement was never high.
Right.
And we have to go forward whether we think we're getting reimbursement or not, and just watch it carefully. I mean, even the piece that is in question, there's still not a definitive answer from part of what we care doing with that.
Well, the majority voted to, to lift the moratorium on school construction projects. That was in the original budget that they put forward, because they didn't, I don't think they even realized they did that. And they were like, and then all their first elects were calling, like, what the heck? And they were like, whoops. So that made, raised the, lifted the moratorium. I, that, I, there's nothing in about the future projects they're going to be submitting. These are projects that were already approved. But they have to go back to one.
I mean, I just think, yeah, well, you're talking about budgets and how different things are. If we, you know, put on the RTM's planner, a project is not going to get state reimbursement.
Well, I mean, I, I can tell you right now, I don't think the RTM's going to bond smart boards. You know, they're going to, they're going to reject, uh, the end, because they are, it's not a item that's going to last half a hundred years. I mean, they'll, they'll bond furniture, fixture.
Can we, can we continue with the board reports? If we want to have a discussion on smart boards, do we have open board discussion? Yes. Mr. Matoule, do you have more on the report moving on to Mr. Weber?
The curriculum policy, special programs, I'll leave that to the chair, the PTA council met, and just a short meeting. Sheldon Leslie is the president this year. We talked about some of the matters that we're discussing, the superintendent, and they did reiterate that they allow in the selection of the superintendent. Perhaps other matters, reports of our committees, and that's about it. I will follow the RTM. I don't believe it'll last me, but, yeah, they will have a meeting, I believe, this one, but I won't, too.
Mrs. On.
Thank you. And yes, I want to thank Mrs. Brand for joining us at our policy meeting. Obviously, when the fruits of our labors came to you and those two first reads, we have protocol for headwinds reads, the revenue policy, 16 months, 4 years, which is repetition of the holiday holidays, and Friday night contest programs or performances has been held over till next meeting, because the high school administration couldn't be with us because they were wrapped up with meas. Also, as Mr. Weber had mentioned, the SWIM through policy, the H1N1, is at Mr. Clary's desk for review, and as soon as he okay's what we can have, that'll come to us for first read. Scholarship Foundation, right now they have attended, date is January 30th, for a family fundraising event, which will be a chocolate festival. More details to follow, few things.
Thank you. Next item is open board discussion. Are there any items from board members? Mrs. Brand?
I have just two. It has to do with the pandemic policy. There also was a piece that I brought to the table, it was a parent question and answer, very simple, it's all public information, and I would like to see both. I know Mr. Clary is looking at both, but as soon as Sands feels comfortable with what we're doing, I'd like to add it in, if possible, as an extraordinary business, because if we wait in the normal tempo, I think we'll be looking at December, and I'd like to make sure we're on top of this, please.
I believe it's scheduled for our next meeting.
It, it will depend, but I would think that would be a reasonable time for the Health Department to review. The other piece was, I wasn't aware, and I know we've been getting reports from the Cultural Diversity Task Force, and we've been very fortunate to have quite a few volunteers. In fact, I asked for a list. They, of late, haven't been quite as busy, but I was thinking about it and thought it might behoove this board, if we asked, the council invite parents from all PTAs to have a representative to be a member. I don't think it's a terribly time-consuming thing, because I don't think we've had an extraordinary number of meetings, but I think if its, its nature is to make recommendations to this board, then I think it would be very prudent to make sure that we're being very inclusive and quite frankly, representing the district at large, so I think that would, I would actually think that'd be good as well. Thank you.
Mrs. Leonard?
Yes, we do meet about four to five times a year, if you're correct. Our charge is identified in the plan to address racial imbalance, approved by this board in '07 and in the addendum in '08. Sent you some information today, Mrs. Brand, along with the rest of the board members, a list of those members, about 51 individuals. A list of those members, about 51 individuals represent the community and schools. I did do an analysis, and there are three schools that are not represented on that list. So for the most part, with the exception of three schools, which of course you can get representation from those three schools, all schools are represented by a parent. And there are numerous educators, of course, and then school, community members that attend meetings as well.
A follow-up, Mrs. Brand.
Yeah, we have, what, 17 buildings, 17 locations. Is it inequitable representation? You said minus three schools. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, when we're listening, that we know what we're listening to.
Sure, there are some schools that have a couple more parents than others. But every school is represented at the table via educator and parent's representation.
Mrs. Ayakon.
I just wanted to bring to the board's attention something that I've been hearing of late, and it has to do with the cursive handwriting. And Dr. Rosado was nice enough to dispel a rumor that the cursive handwriting program has been disbanded in the fourth grade. That's not true. I was able to find out. However, a lot of the feedback I've been getting is that, from parents of middle schoolers, is that their children can't read cursive handwriting. And that this is, they, you know, see this as a problem. They have to, they think that their children have difficulty writing it, and they can't read it. So I'm just wondering if we do some type of assessment, or if we, you know, are making sure that our, as they're moving up through the system, can they read cursive handwriting? I know it's a dying art, but it's probably an important skill to have. Bring that to everyone's attention, and maybe ask you guys to look at some of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kepchuk.
I just wanted to bring, follow up on my concussion rampage I'm having now, because 60 Minutes just did this big show on concussions. And this medical, they were talking about a law that was passed along to states regarding this student, this young high school kid who didn't, after he got hit, and now he is pretty much, can't walk and talk, and he's a 16-year-old. So there should have been a medical, certified medical person on the sidelines who would have pulled him out after the first hit. And he wouldn't, and have ended up like that. I really want our committee to look at this. And I'll get the link consented. I meant to send it to Board members, it was really great. You could probably watch it right on the computer. It was really informative, that piece about the concussions, and it had a lot of good information. And something else I just wanted to bring up was the Nature's Classroom. You know, a couple of people wrote to me about how parents, you know, some people can't afford Nature's Classroom, and we have them stay at the school. And they're, about the equity issue to this, and.
Any family that needs help, the schools provide scholarships.
So does that mean everybody goes?
Everybody who wants to.
And what do you mean, wants to?
Any child who wants to go to Nature's Classroom.
Can go.
Can go. Some families don't want their child to go.
They just don't want him to go.
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure these students have an opportunity. I just, you know, the way that it was posed to me is that some children, just because they couldn't afford it, were not being able to participate in it, and that was really rubbing me the wrong way.
Two quick things, Mr. Weber, and then Mrs. Brand.
Enrollment projections, Mr. Weber. We got them in our packet the other day.
I thought you got the enrollment information as to October 1st versus the projections from last year.
Correct, that's what I have in front of me. And you were 26 off, correct?
You're close, 22.
22 off, all together.
Wait, 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 wait. Yeah, 22 when you include everything.
When you look at the preschool, which was down four.
26.
But in the regular education.
26 kids.
Yeah, 26. Which is a great job. It's fantastic job. I mean, there's been a lot of talk about lack of planning and the subject, so forth and so on. But to be 26 kids off in the high school enrollment is dead on. I looked at Straffield, it's down 32 students. Were we able, in Straffield, because of the construction that's going on there, open up another classroom for them? Make any sort of adjustments there in terms of space?
We're able to move one of the specials back to a classroom space.
Okay, so, great.
Yes.
That's fantastic, because we had a big concern about Straffield during the construction, and lo and behold, we freed up space, so I think it's working. So thank you for this report.
Actually, I have to give credit to Mrs. McQuine, because she actually juggles the numbers there to me. The pluses and minuses.
Thank you. Mrs. Brand.
This is just two things, as to a follow-up about the concussion piece. I actually spoke with Dr. Carver, very kind enough, to have the school district policy and the procedures for what is done for children who are suspected of having a head injury. It has now been forwarded to the Board of Health, the Department of Health, and all the school nurses, just so we all have a mutual understanding of what is supposed to be done, and then have better follows-through. And the only other thing I would like to, and I meant to, I apologize, I forgot to do it earlier, is about the hand washing. Is, can we just, once again, just to make sure that it's consistent throughout the district, that, you know, we have people announce and remind the faculty, as well as students, before lunch. It's, it's great if they're there, it's better if we remind them, because we all, as parents, you can tell your kids, but unless you're sitting over them, so if they're, we'll be in good wish they're home. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no other items, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mrs. Zahn, Mrs. Ayakon, all in favor? Ask the board members to remain.